We'll call the meeting to order with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Milkie?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Lannon?
Here.
Trustee Lay?
Here.
Trustee Thering?
Here.
Treasurer Rogers is excused, and Clerk Cody, I'm here.
All accounted for or excused. We have a fairly light agenda, maybe, we'll see, but I'm happy to entertain any motions on the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Brown, to approve the agenda as presented, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously. We have no presentations tonight, nor public hearings, so that brings us to item seven on the agenda, public comment, which is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we will open up public comment at 7:01 PM.
Hello, my name is Franklin McKenzie, address 1430 Cypress Street, Union Township. My application to be on the zoning Board of Appeals is in the agenda tonight, and Rodney Nanny invited me here to introduce myself to all of you, so here I am. I've lived here for a little over two years now with my wife, and, you know, it has started to feel like home, and I wanted to be a little more involved in the community, and so at first I applied for the Planning Commission, but there wasn't any vacancies there, but then I was recommended to apply for the ZBA, and I did some more research, and I thought that that actually would be interesting, and, you know, not to get too much of a soapbox, but I do think it is a really valuable thing we have, you know, in this country, that a person has the ability to appeal, you know, zoning decisions if they want to, you know, build a new structure on their land, anything like that, I really think it is a great chance that we have that, and it's a big responsibility for people on the ZBA to make those decisions balancing, you know, individuals' interests with the community and the law. I work as a patent attorney, I went to law school, so I'm familiar with, you know, how to apply the law. I studied administrative law, local government, federal Indian law, even though that may not necessarily be relevant due to the close of reservations, so I like to mention it. And, yeah, I like to think I have a knack for conflict mediation, you know, diplomacy. I like to hear people's arguments, you know, and see how to objectively and fairly make a decision based on them. And though I may have only lived here for two years, I came from Lennox Township, which is similar to Union Township. It's very rural and close to a, you know, more urban area, and, you know, whatever I may lack in long-term familiarity with the area, because I've been here for two years, I feel I can make up for that, you know, with my capacity to learn quickly, you know. I went through law school, studied for the bar, so I believe I have skills that would do well on this, on this board, and, you know, I'll leave it to you to make your decision, but either way, thank you for considering me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody connected remotely?
No.
Seeing no one else coming forward at this time, we'll close the public comment at 7:04 PM. Thank you again, Mr. McKenzie. Let's see, that takes us to item nine on the agenda, report boards and comments. As one of our public noted, we have a vacancy on the ZBA. I do have a preference of wanting our full board, but if this board would like to move forward with the application, I certainly won't stand in the way of that. I did talk to our treasurer, and treasurer had no issues with whatever we decided, so if there is a desire for the board to move on this tonight, then someone make a motion, otherwise we'll address this at our next meeting, when hopefully we have a full board.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
When is our next ZBA meeting?
May I ask, Mr. Stuldryer, do you know when the next ZBA would be? It's probably three, another month, another month, roughly.
So we have a couple, we have another session before...
Yeah, the only difficulty with that, I'm going to guess, we probably have nothing on the agenda yet? Okay, but if it, if we did, which would have to happen pretty soon, the advantage of doing an earlier appointment would be to allow for training for that individual to sit on that board. That's the two sides of it.
I don't have any objections.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for Franklin McKenzie to be appointed to the ZBA for the term of, I'm going to need help with that one, term date, I'm sorry?
The current term.
It looks like through the end of...
12/31/26.
12/20, 12/31/26.
Through 12/31/2026.
Support.
We have a motion by Brown, support by Lay, further discussion?
Very pleased to see this individual come forward. His application and resume are very strong, and welcome to Mount, to Union Township a couple of years late. Glad you're enjoying it.
Clerk Cody?
The open vacancy is an alternate position.
Correct, yes, yep, and I did have conversations with Mr. McKenzie about that prior to the meeting, so he's aware of that, but it would not be uncommon for the ZBA, if they actually have business, that alternate have to step in. So I'll just add, maybe parrot the public comment a little bit. I did like the resume as far as a ZBA position, having a background in law, certainly seems like that's an advantage when you're sitting on the ZBA and having to make essentially judicial decisions in those cases. I was glad to see some of the educational background you have.
Franklin, I'm, I'm very pleased to make this appointment. I love to see the younger generation getting involved, and us old guys, we're going to be stepping up, like myself. We just, I can't say it strong enough to see a young face come in here vibrant, wanting to get on the board. It's so pleasing, it's just, it's, it's really wonderful to see that, so you made my night tonight, Franklin, thank you.
Personally, I'm just very excited to read your resume and see that you have diverse agriculture experience in your background, that made me very pleased.
Trustee Brown, would you be willing, just for clarification, on your motion to state alternate two?
Yes, this is for the alternate position.
I still support.
Okay. Other comments? So we have a motion, anybody not clear on the motion? All in favor of appointing Mr. McKenzie to the alternate two position on the ZBA, terminating 12/31/2026, I think I got that right? Say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may, I'll just make a note again that education is very helpful in this, so I'm assuming we'll reach out to Mr. McKenzie and get him arranged with that, and...
We will definitely do that.
Perfect, I expected no less, but I'm stating that almost for his benefit as well. Thanks again. A note, EDA board still has the one spot open, as a reminder, the difficulty with those is that we ideally need to find somebody that lives or works within the district.
If you want to hang out until after the meeting, I can swear you in tonight, if you have to.
So that'll take us, unless there's objections to the board member reports? Trustee Brown?
No report tonight.
Trustee Lannon?
Good evening, and thank you, I did attend a Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting, and they were going over their reviewing requests for their 2% applications. And so they'll be looking at 2% applications to the Chippewa Saginaw Indian Tribe to aid in one Isabella County Commission on Aging. They're also looking at an application from the 911 Emergency Management Department. They're going to consider the application for the Isabella County Material Recovery Facility. They're reviewing the application from the Isabella Conservation District for household hazardous waste pickup and electronic waste recycling. They'll be reviewing the application from the Humane Animal Treatment Society, and finally, the application from the Isabella County Prosecuting Attorney's Office for some case management software. Also, they're looking at consideration of renewing some contracts for the Commission on Aging. Those would include individual service contracts, where they use citizens to put on exercise classes, art classes, the various things that are available through the Commission on Aging, as well as in-home nursing help for folks. And so that's what the board will be discussing at their regular meeting. Questions on that?
Wonderful.
There? Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lay?
I've got nothing.
Trustee Thering?
Nothing to report.
Clerk Cody?
Nothing to report.
And I don't have a whole lot either, so we'll move on. Item 10 on the agenda, consent agenda, happy to entertain any motions with that, and incidentally, who had warrants?
That's me, and I forgot.
Okay, so take that into account if you make a motion?
I forgot, it was my month.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item C until...
Well...
What's that?
I wouldn't minus it, I would just say under, until...
Under review?
Per her. I don't know.
Per review?
Yeah.
Conditional?
Okay. So I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is per review of item C accounts payable.
Support.
So the only comment I would make is then...
I'll get them done tonight before I go home.
So, and then get an email or communication out, so that staff knows that they get approved if this board approves the consent agenda.
Okay.
Discussion?
So those warrants are in our board packet, we all had a chance to review them, I reviewed them from, without looking at the actual invoice or whatnot from the vendor itself, but everything looked pretty standard.
We good, anybody not clear on the motion?
No.
All in favor of approving consent agenda with the one caveat condition, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Consent agenda passes unanimously, that brings us to our first new business item, introduction and first reading to the proposed park ordinance update. Mr. Stuldryer, would you be willing to introduce this?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everyone. There is a report on this item that begins on page 22 of your agenda packet. We are asking the board to consider introducing and conducting a first reading for a new parks ordinance and an associated amendment to the Indian Pines Park Ordinance. The parks ordinance that we're looking to update was originally approved in, I'm not sure when it was originally approved, last amended at any rate in 1994, and because it references the Indian Pines Ordinance, we had to update that one as well, to keep the two in sync. The Indian Pines Ordinance is simply being changed and updated to reflect similar language that we'll see in the Parks Ordinance regarding reference to the tribal law enforcement agency, to also have jurisdictional authority to enforce our ordinances in the Indian Pines Park, which is located actually in the, well, I know the park's owned and operated by the city, and so I think it's located in the township. But the old Indian Parks Ordinance referenced just the city police, so we want to expand that. The Parks Ordinance, which is really the meat of the item tonight, does a couple of things. It enlarges the authority for local law enforcement to include the tribe, the state police, which may have jurisdiction anyways, but we're just mentioning it, city police, and I might have been missing one, CMU.
Tribal.
Tribal, tribal. So that's one significant change in the ordinance. The other is to make it more explicit that camping, loitering, particularly after hours, is prohibited in the camp, this is, or in the park. This is also an effort to address some homeless folks that have been using the parks, both McDonald and Jamison, it's unfortunate, they don't have anywhere to go, but we prefer they not hang out overnight at the, at either of our parks. There's also a provision in the ordinance that allows for future rules, if you will, through the adoption of policies. If, for instance, the board down the road wanted to allow horseback riding in the park, we could do that by policy under this ordinance, as opposed to having to amend the ordinance itself to better regulate after-hours usage and related enforcement. There, the park rules are proposed to be seven, park hours are proposed to be from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. The new ordinance also explicitly states that it is allowable to carry concealed weapon as long as it's properly registered in the park. Those are the main, the main points of it, there's been some other, I'll call them more ministerial changes just because of the age of the ordinance, but we do feel that this ordinance will make it easier, if you will, for enforcement, and then when we are forced to enforce, we have a set of rules that the law enforcement agencies are, there's more clarity in there for their purposes. So as I said, this is an introduction and first reading. If approved, we would be back at your next meeting, asking for second reading, final adoption, with all the requisite postings and notifications being made. There is a clean copy of the ordinance in your packet, as well as, at least for the Indian Pines or Redline version. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd be happy to make a motion to introduce and conduct a first reading for the proposed new parks ordinance and for the associated amendments to the Indian Pines Park Ordinance number 2016-02.
Support.
Have a motion by Lannon, support by Cody. For the public's use, this is a formal public hearing. If someone would like to speak to it, they can feel free to get up and do so.
I have a question, would there, and I believe if I read correctly, that there could be, I don't know if it's the word exception made, or something allowed, if there was a, let's just say there was an event that was happening, and there was going to be food trucks?
I believe that's addressed in the potential for policy.
Would that be kind of like a special, they'd have to come in?
The specifics would be outlined in the policy itself, but there would be some sort of application and review process to make sure the truck is compliant with the, whether it's food and beverage rules or fire department, propane, those kind of things.
I mean, I don't think that's something that's happened, but we have a beautiful park here at McDonald Park, and you just never know if somebody wanted a little...
Right.
Outdoor music thing, that invited everybody, and they threw a couple of food trucks up, and just, you know, something simple, would that be something that would be absolutely prohibited, so?
Right now it's prohibited because it's not explicitly allowed, but that situation, should it come up, and we may want to look at that specific item from a policy perspective sooner rather than later, because food trucks are popular, but initially out of the gate, it would be prohibited.
Okay.
So, you good?
Would it be worth, I hate to say it like this, but would it be, if we're neck deep in it right now, would it be worth having that discussion now, or is that something that, if that was presented, it wouldn't be very difficult to have a discussion to?
And I'm speaking a bit without reading in again closely, but since the policy is allowed via the ordinance, I'm pretty certain that the policy would be brought to the Board of Trustees for approval.
But, and if I may, my take on it was, we may not want to just have a permanent, since we use food trucks, since that's the example used, or we can use equestrian activities, right, as well? Those are prohibited, but we can create a policy to allow temporary use of that, so we have some control over when the parks are being used for that type of activity, rather than having food trucks just always decide to park up, park there. Is that a reasonable take on that?
I'd say yes, the reasonable take is that there be a draft policy prepared by the administration for consideration by the board, and that at that point, you know, you have carte blanche to what you want to do with that policy recommendation.
But largely, as I read this, it would be intended for temporary allowing of activities that might otherwise be prohibited.
Yes, that I'm sure would be articulated in the policy, we don't want to just allow a food truck to pull up at 7:00 in the morning and leave at 11:00 at night.
Yeah.
Seven days a week, right?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't really thinking about it like that, I was just thinking...
Well, that's why I brought it up like that, because I thought, if, if there's an activity that would be helpful for residents to have that, and it's a good opportunity for the food trucks, we certainly can open that door so that it's allowed, without making it a permanent feature.
Yeah, right, right, okay.
That's how I took it.
Okay.
Trustee Lannon?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank management and department heads for continuously looking where consistencies are needed in our policies and ordinances, and they must have come across a park item that they realized, you know, something's named in this one, it's not consistent. Why is diligently looking to bring our ordinances and policies into a form that is pretty clear and gives you a good direction on how to enforce things? So, thank you.
I think that's a great comment, because over the last several years, Township's done a lot to modernize some of our older ordinances, bring them in compliance, one with state law, but two, in compliance with other ordinances that we have, as well as to try to make them work better for the community. Any other comments? We have a motion to introduce and conduct a first reading of the Pines Park Ordinance number 2016-02. Anybody not clear on the motion? Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Milkie?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Lannon?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes, all yeses.
First reading and introduction passes unanimously, just for the public's information, the way this works is sometime in the near future, most likely, I'm guessing our next meeting, although it may be in, it's possible it slides to October, we will have a second reading. That's an opportunity, again, for the public to comment on it. This board won't take any action on this, other than going, at this point, going through this first reading. So with that, we'll move on to new business, item B. We have a request to waive the requirement for separate sanitary sewer and water lead on South Crawford Road, Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this, please?
Thank you, on page 35 of your agenda packet, there is a report on this item. We received a request from Ms. Lori McDonald, owner of the property at 5064 South Crawford, to... The request from the property owner was that it is, to the board, is to consider waiving a hookup fee that is applicable by ordinance on this property. This is a new build, it's a house, and then behind it, generally behind it, is a pole barn, and our ordinance, we have, so we have two buildings there. The one building, the pole barn, is going to have some plumbing fixtures in it, and it has been indicated to the township that there could be commercial activity going on in there, specifically in the form of a dog training exercise type of facility. We informed the applicant at the very beginning of the application process. You need a building permit, that requires in some review by zoning, and also... need a building permit, that requires in some review by zoning, it also requires some review by, uh, public services. Um, we'd informed the applicant back in 2024, at the very beginning, that two leads are required and they have proceeded. I'm not sure how far through the build they are as of right now. Um, but we have an ordinance that does not allow for that. Um, there's two things I think that primarily drive that ordinance. One is health and safety of the, uh, in this case, the sewer system. There's a request for a second sewer lead. Um, we need to be concerned with strength of flow and what's entering into our system. Um, it also, um, as, as an activity increases and intensifies on a particular parcel or piece of land, it creates additional, um, stress on the sewer system. So we have to be conscious of that. One way we monitor that is through, uh, if you've got two, two buildings, you're going to need two leads, um, as opposed to just kind of piggybacking off of one that ends at the house and then continuing it on to the, um, to the pole barn in this, in this case. Um, I'm not sure that you've had a request for a waiver of a hookup fee before. I look at it as akin to requests that you have entertained before and denied, uh, for waiver of fees and penalties on late payments, those kinds of things. Um, so for those reasons and, um, we're recommending that the board deny the request. The letter from the applicant is on page thirty-seven. We also have a late, a letter, uh, related to this matter from the zoning administrator. He's had several phone calls with the applicant from a, you know, from the very beginning through approval processes and, uh, it's been consistently indicated to him that, uh, there'll be some commercial activity going on back there. So for those reasons, we're recommending that you deny it. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have our public services director here if you have any more technical type of questions. Thank you.
Any questions for our manager?
The ordinance, how long has the ordinance been in effect that, that we don't tie one, that two structures have to be, have two leads?
Oh, the water one's nineteen eighty-seven and the, nobody would, and the sewer was like nineteen ninety, well, it was nineteen eighty-seven and one was nineteen ninety-one.
Close enough, thank you.
Yeah, nineteen eighty-seven is the sewer one and the water one, oh, it's nineteen eighty.
Eighty, nineteen eighty, oh, okay.
Eighty and eighty-seven.
Eighty and eighty-seven, okay, thank you. I appreciate that, thank you. That's all I have.
If this was just a, just a pole barn, no other activity other than just a pole barn, would it then be required?
Two structures.
It's a separate building. I mean, if there was no plumbing, there probably would be no sewer lead.
Right. I think that's what you were asking, right?
I'm asking if somebody wanted to build a pole barn and put a restroom in it?
Yeah, it would require separately.
It would require a separate?
It's only.
No, no commercial activity, just?
I'm not speaking about no commercial activity to get into zoning and some of those kinds of things, but in this particular case, we have a separate building. It has plumbing fixtures, I think a sink and a toilet per the drawings. Um, and then we also have, um, strong indication that commercial activity will be occurring in the form of, uh, dog obedience and exercise operation.
And I, I understand, I guess I was just speaking about, we could talk about any other new build, you know, if that was something that would be required, if there was, if that would never happen. Not, not necessarily about this, I guess I'm kind of sidestepping and just asking a side question, so.
And what is that side question?
Would the separate lead be required?
For?
The sewer and the water.
Yeah.
In which instance?
I'm sorry?
Just as, in which condition?
If I, if I were to buy a three acre parcel and, and build my house and put a pole barn beside it, that's all it's ever going to be and I wanted to put a sink or a restroom in there, I would, you're saying even in that situation, I would need two, a separate?
Correct.
Okay, that, that, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the commercial aspect is irrelevant to what our ordinance says.
Okay.
Separate, separate building with
Yeah.
plumbing essentially, right? Triggers that.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
So, um, trying to think of how to ask this. So, I wasn't involved in the ordinances back in nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty-seven. Um, I'm assuming there are, as manager mentioned, hea- health and, I'll just say health for the moment, health reasons why you might do this outside of the, the monitoring aspect of seeing what's going into the sewer. Um, or, and maybe there's engineering, so I'm kind of curious as to why the ordinance originally set that up. Um, I'm su, I'm assuming it wasn't arbitrary and why was it not arbitrary?
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I do. For sewer, I think the main, um, the main issue that would happen is if you put two buildings like that on one lead and so you have a residential home and a pole barn, whatever's going on in the pole barn, come together, they come into one lead. At some point where they tie into the sewer, there probably will be a problem there because it's, you know, they're four inch leads, there could be an issue. Water, it has more to do with, um, the metering of the water and the independence of shut-offs. And another issue could be, and I have seen this happen, I don't know if this will happen in this instance, but people separate the property or they sell one building and keep another one, even though the ordinance says that they have to then hook up the other building, a lot of times that doesn't happen. So those are some, some reasons why you would do that, but with sewer, even with cleanouts, they potentially could cause problems where the lead actually ties into the main.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, question, just for my clarification. Are they looking to have a fee waived or waive one of the sets of sewer and water leads?
They're looking for both. They only want to put in one sewer lead and one water lead and service both buildings. So if they're only getting one, then they pay one fee.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, they would only have to run, you know, one line to the water, for the water and sewer.
Okay. Next question is, the required setup, are there two meters involved?
Yes, there would be two meters involved. Yes, they would have two water meters, one each structure.
Okay. And, uh, then I guess my last question. In the reading here, it says it is doable in commercial and industrial situations.
Mm-hmm.
And they talk about utilizing a manifold and such, but, so I, I'm just a little curious on, and maybe they're not apples and apples, but why can this be done in a commercial or industrial setting, but not in what we're looking?
If you read the exceptions, it has to do with the placement of the buildings and it talks about alleyways. So for instance, if you have a build, let's say they're building a building and then right behind it is another building and you see that a lot in like commercial and industrial, they would, based on that, they would get an exception if they don't have access to that sewer because the other building would be blocking their access to that sewer. So then they could hook those two buildings together. I looked at this when she originally asked me this question because I thought, well, maybe it would, but they're not connected together and one, they sit next to each other. If you look at their site plans that they've submitted with their building permits, the residential home and the barn are pretty much in line with each other, both facing Crawford Road. So one does not sit behind the other, so they have access to the sewer for both of them.
Then a scenario that just came in, I don't know a great scenario, but if you had just one service and for whatever reason you were required for whatever reason to shut off water to the pole barn, you'd have to shut water off to the residents then, which creates an issue, you know, if you got into sale of that or whatever issue would require the water to be shut off, so. Thank you for helping me understand this.
Yes.
Other questions?
Our motion to deny the request to waive the requirement for the separate and independent water and sanitary sewer lead for the proposed pole barn located at fifty sixty-four South Crawford Road.
Motion by Cody, support by Brown. Any other discussion? We've had a lot, quite a few questions already, but.
If the buildings were connected somehow, would that make a difference? If there was like a, if there was a breezeway, you know, like a hallway?
Yeah, because that would be considered more structured.
Understood.
And they had noticed ahead of time that there was two, that they needed two hookups, so, you know, you went in knowing this from the beginning, so.
That question was just more for my own personal, not necessarily pertaining to.
You're going to attach your new barn, aren't you?
Yeah. Don't do it.
The barn to your house?
Our, our ordinance, both ordinance have been in effect for a long time. A lot of structures have been set up this way in this, this township for many, many years.
I'm sure there's many people out there that have had to do that.
Have had to do this, yep, so.
Yeah, if I, if I thought the ordinance was crazy, um,
Absolutely.
I would look at trying to change the ordinance, but I don't like creating exceptions that, um, make it unfair to maybe other applicants that are either in the future or already have built.
Absolutely, yes.
Anything else? Uh, anybody not clear on the motion? Motion was to deny the request to waive the requirement for a separate and independent water and sanitary sewer lead, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. I hear unanimous approval of that motion. That brings us to our last new business item, uh, eleven C, drinking water revolving fund, uh, the ARPA grant division C, uh, change order number two. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this, please?
Thank you, and there's a report that begins on page forty-nine of your agenda packet that discusses this issue. Just by way of recollection, this is related to our ten point nine million dollar water expansion improvement project that we've been working on for the last couple of years. The money is sourced from the state, uh, as a pass-through from originally the federal government and this is related to division C. You may recall that we've broken this project into four divisions for management purposes, mostly in allowing us some flexibility. And so this is the division that is primarily dealing with the expansion of the water plant down on Isabella. The original contract was approved, um, last year at some point. It, uh, was let to, um, J.R. Heinemann. The original contract was three point nine million dollars and some change. We did, uh, the board did approve a, a change order, I think it was earlier this year, uh, in the amount of five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. This change order is increasing the project for division C by an additional three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And so as was touched upon when you first addressed this change order, change order number one, um, this is money we received from the Fed slash state. Um, at the time, we applied for the funding, we had outlined all the work that we could afford to do within, uh, this project and at the time, the supply chain was in a lot of flux and, um, and as we've gone through with all the divisions, uh, and actually done the bidding for the construction, we have come into instances where the original estimates were quite a bit lower than the bids that we received, so we had to make adjustments, uh, taking money, um, or requesting money from people like the EDA and the water fund to help fill those gaps. There have been other divisions that have come in under budget and at the end of the day, from the regulate, regulatory perspective, as long as we're doing things that meet the definition of what the grants, unallowable use under the grant guidelines, um, then we're allowed to, to do that work. And the, the way the finances for the project have ended up is that we are finding that we have net more available funding that's been awarded to us than the original contracts we're let for, uh, because we've led a lot of contracts for different divisions, different periods of time. And so there's additional work that we can do that is within the scope of the grant requirements and it's allowing us to, you know, in a perfect world, we draw this grant down to zero and build everything that was allowable under the guidelines. Uh, whether or not we'll get there or not, I don't know. Um, as demonstrated on page fifty, um, with approval of this change order, there will be still seven hundred thousand dollars of available funding. Um, so there's plenty of funding. Uh, along the way, we have asked for EDA contributions and then told them we didn't need them. Uh, we had budgeted for suits for water fund contributions, we have not needed those. The idea being why not put everything we can into the grant bucket. Uh, that funding has been provided for by the taxpayers across the entire country, not just township residents. Um, so it's a really, uh, nice opportunity to leverage, um, the grant funding, uh, to maximize upgrades to the system. Uh, the upgrades, and they're all listed here, are within the grant guidelines. We're not up against any, you know, we're not walking the line and being cute with it or anything like that. These are clear, clearly within the scope. And there are items that are needed now, uh, some more immediate, others planning, continue to plan for the future. Uh, so we have this opportunity to continue to build out the system, hence the request for the change order on this sub-piece of the entire ten point nine million dollar project. Be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Horrible spot to be in.
I'm sorry?
It's a tough spot to be in.
They're our worst problems to have.
Yes, there is.
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion of approval of the change order number two with J.R. Heinemann for the Eagle Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRWF. ARPA grant division C water treatment plant expansion project in the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Cody. Uh, discussion?
Again, this is just so exciting. It's an outstanding grant.
Yeah. Um, I'll, I'll just comment that, uh, I'm not sure I fully, because I'm not a, an engineer in, in this realm, um, so I'm not sure I completely. so I'm not sure I completely understand every single line item here, read them all, but most of them make at least some sense to me. But I really like the ones that are in here that are geared towards future expansion. So, for example, conduit size for future generator, so that if we needed an additional generator in the future, we don't have to go rip out some of that conduit and put a larger one in, we're ready for that. So I really think we're setting ourselves up to be able to have maintainable, more maintainable system with this as well. Other comments? Anybody not clear on the motion? Would you like a roll call on this?
Sure.
Okay. Would you do a roll call of the board on this, please?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Lannon?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
And Clerk Cody, yes, all yeses.
Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item twelve in the agenda, extended public comment. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. Note, if you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, at seven forty-eight, we'll open up extended public comment. Anybody connected remotely? Let the record show, nobody's connected remotely. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at seven forty-eight PM. That takes us to item thirteen on the agenda, managers' comments. Mr. Stuhl dryer, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I just have two, just in both reminders. The first one is a reminder that McDonald Park is closing for the season on September fifteenth. We have a construction project going on within the park, a little over five hundred thousand dollars, and that will allow for that work to be done safely and efficiently and more quickly as well. So that timing, it's not much earlier than normal, that park will be closed. There is signage on our buildings, on our websites, and it's been pushed out to those that have signed up for alerts on the website. Then the other reminder is our cleanup day, September twenty-seventh, eight AM to eleven at Commission on Aging, and that's always a fun event. Two hundred and fifty to three hundred cars pass through with trailers, and we provide compact dump trucks for that kind of trash. We're not talking about garbage, but, you know, mattresses, bed frames, those kind of things. We have a roll-off for steel and aluminum and those items. We have shredded come in, if you want to get rid of your personal, some personal documents that you may have. And I'm missing one.
Electronics.
Electronics, thank you. Compernu for old TVs, computers, batteries, that kind of thing. So that's on the twenty-seventh, and we can always use volunteers, so it'll be donuts and coffee, and a pair of gloves and some safety glasses. And a shirt. I would recommend that you wear closed-toed shoes, but it's not what I call dangerous work. So thank you.
Thank you. One quick question for you. Want to piggyback on Trustee Lannon's comments during the board comment. Talked about the county discussing two percent applications. Do you have a timeframe on when the staff would like to bring their recommendations to the board?
It'll be later this month, I think.
Okay.
If we have any.
Okay. Any questions for our manager? Let's go to final board member comment. Trustee Thering?
Good, thank you.
Clerk Cody?
I was going to remind about the cleanup day, but I don't need to do that now. So I guess I'll just leave it at, happy birthday, Mark.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. Trustee Brown?
Yeah, so I would, just one thing, I'd like to welcome Franklin McKenzie to, as a new board member, and again, we love to see the community stepping up and jumping in to help us out at Union Township. And again, thank you, Franklin. Appreciate it.
Trustee Lannon?
Other than a hearty happy birthday to Mark Stuhl dryer. Enjoyed tonight's meeting and happy to see folks from the press and the audience as well.
I'm happy to be here, too. Thank you.
Trustee Lay?
Nothing.
I was going to lift up the press, too, so I'm really thrilled that you're here. We used to have a presence that was here all the time, and then that seemed to go away, and so to see someone back representing the Morning Sun is exciting. Congrats on the new job, by the way.
Thank you very much.
And with that, our new business is done, all of our business is done, and we'll adjourn, adjourn, we'll adjourn at seven fifty-two PM.
Thank you.